Hello everyone. Now from this special session two, which is called “Virtual Science and Art Exhibitions”. I’m honoured to be, let’s say, moderating, presiding over this session because I think it’s very interesting since it’s on the intersection between science and art. And as an anthropologist, I’ve been thinking a lot about, in these terms, let’s say, within anthropology, what we should do and how we should deal with culture and society and science and so on. So, today, we will have only two speakers instead of three. So, the first one will be Dr. Paschington Obeng, the second will be Yev Craft. The second, which was here, the second speaker, Professor Puchan from the Chinese Academy of Sciences could not come, unfortunately. He sends his apologies and greetings, but he was too busy. So, I will just read his abstract that he has sent. He asked for that to be done, even though you have it in front of you. And I would like to ask the speakers to use their 20 minutes, so that we can also have some discussion. And we have to end really in time, in order to go to the exhibition across the street. They’re waiting for us, very precisely. Okay, so, now, I would like to ask Paschington Obeng, the Chief Executive Officer of the Pan-African Heritage Museum in Accra, Ghana, to hold his talk called “Origin of Humanity: Pan-African Heritage Perspective”. So, please, Obeng.
Thank you, Madame Chair, and I would want to show a clip that touches on the importance of stories, and then the second part being the significance of relating the stories to our understanding of human origin. Thank you.
History is a craft people use to tell the time of day. The history of a people should tell them who they are as a people, where they come from, what they have accomplished, and what they must accomplish. Since the beginning of humanity in Africa, from where our ancestors emerged, humans have sought answers about origins. Who are we? Where do we come from? How did the world begin? Their answers to these questions form the core of their communal identities. As human societies sought to ground contemporary experiences in the past and explain the familiar through stories, they come to define their places in the world through narratives. These narratives speak of creation, beliefs, and cosmogonies, which tell how the cosmos was created from a primal state. These narratives also speak of origin, which explain how extended families, social institutions, cultures, and humanity itself came into being. We may argue, then, that Africa is not only where our human ancestors developed, but also the front from which all human cultural traditions flowed. The idea of origin is prevalent in all human societies. However, only Africa can claim the origin of the species we now call human, thus the importance of its ideas about creation of both the world and humanity.
This is a story that tells the interconnectedness of art and life in Africa. It is evidenced in many African cosmologists that not only trace the origin of art to a high god or supreme divinity, but also identify the human body as a piece of sculpture animated by vital force. Babatunde Lawal said that African societies so valued art that they speak of the human as amegneto, a model living clay, in the language of the Iwe people of Ghana and Togo. Such conception of the human as a work of art, which sees hem or hair as modeled living clay, calls for an understanding in which the human, as a work of art, transcends death for other existences. This multi-dimensional human, because a work of art, is then capable of dematerialization from the physical to the metaphysical, or reincarnation. This multi-dimensional human, because a work of art, is then capable of dematerialization from the physical to the metaphysical, of reincarnation as a new baby, or even reappearing in other dimension. These artworks are then forges from which Africa builds the humans, endowing them with all the necessary knowledge for the Homo sapiens from Africa to begin the great migration through which they gave birth to humanity. These works transcend their consideration as art, their vital forces incarnate, and burden the very notion of being through the supreme divinity, which itself is understood as an art maker. They are expressions of an African genesis which speaks of the origin of the living being by the supreme divinity, sculpting, or molding, or drawing our coming-to-be. These works are then granaries of memory containers and contents whose presence is fundamental to the vitality of their societies. These codes, the codes, signs and symbols embedded in them formed the scientific capital of African societies. Through these works, we constructed a cosmogony, tracing our existence to the supreme divinity as in the Yoruba, from whom Olodumari, God the supreme, commissioned the creativity deity Obatala to mold the first human image from clay. We see here, act at the beginning, God’s making of humans, a commissioned artwork. These objects of culture, of ontological significance, tell their creators who they are, what are the sources of the origin of the advanced creativity which beyond the circuit...
Thank you. There is an African proverb which says, “Until lions have their own historians, tales of hunting will always glorify the hunter.” This points to the fact that being in charge of our own stories and devising how to tell those very stories are as important as ourselves. Further, the historian John Henrik Clark writes, “If we are going to be masters of our destiny, we must be masters of the ideas that influence that destiny.” That is to say, since ideas matter, we must shape our ideas so that our ideas are not allowed to control us. Rather, we should adopt simultaneous or corresponding, being responsible and accountable and ethically competent approach to the very ideas that we give birth to. This is very important, because he continues to argue that a people’s relationship to their heritage is the same as the relationship of a child to its mother. We must therefore find a way of humanizing what we value as our heritage by developing a mother or parent-child relationship with that heritage. The little that I’ve gleaned from being here so far is the urge in the lives of people to indicate that ideas per se should not be left to run amok, but we should find a way of humanizing them in order that we could create a humanity with a sense of responsibility, ethical leadership, and accountability. Inspired by some of the above insights, the logo of the Pan-African Heritage Museum headquartered in Accra is the bullhorn that represents an indigenous way of announcing messages, producing music, and telling stories. Our contribution to the discussion on sustainable development is shaped by the use of storytelling to be able to just find a way of understanding the origins of humanity. But we tie the origins of humanity to our understanding of civilization. Stories for us are the incubators of history, science, technology, and innovation. The Pan-African Heritage Museum uses its virtual, augmented, and physical spaces to tell the story of the African origins of the wise-thinking human being, Homo sapiens, and civilizations. We rely on paleoanthropological, geoscientific, paleoecological, and evolutionary biology research to embrace that, the insight that is revealed for us. And why is this important? It is important because by understanding how we evolved to be where we are today, regarding our common humanity, we will be instructed to find a way of living and living well because by paying attention to the tangible and intangible heritage objects of our lives, we are therefore coming closer to what brought us into being and how we should live in order to live an excellent legacy for posterity. Our museum, although collects, educates, inspires, heals, as other museums do, we also pay attention to finding ways of bringing intergenerational groups together and people from all backgrounds, because we believe that by harnessing all those objects and allowing those that gave birth to those objects to come into contact with them, their humanity will be enhanced. What do we mean by that? The museum therefore celebrates the past by gathering welcoming artifacts, stories, and other resources to Ghana, which is the headquarters of the Pan-African Heritage Museum. We are celebrating diversity, we are celebrating divergence, but we are also celebrating convergence. The exhibitions that have been couched contain over 5,000 in the galleries. They contain renderings of the first humans who walked the earth around 3.6 million years ago, as well as the evolution of our species and the significance of art as a site of our ontological identity markers. So, art is not separate from the maker, nor the source that gave birth to the artist and the art itself. It is that intertwining relationship that is at the core of what our museum does. The exhibitions further address how early hominins adapted to the microfloral environment, how they used tools, creating civilizations and thus reflecting differences in innovation and technological advances. The digitized technology is used to foster immersive experience through combination of 3D images, text, sound, video renderings. These renderings unfold along virtual galleries of scaled dimensions to allow visitors to dive into 360-degree environment where there is no boundary between the physical and the virtual worlds. The exhibitions therefore tap the sensory experiences of sight, hearing, reading, touch, and connect and reconnect through simulation and animation. For instance, it touches on Odun Chapa and the Ashillean Handax from East Africa, touching also on Omo kibish in South Africa, addresses new fossils from Djibel erudged in Morocco, touches on early humans from Chad, and therefore presenting us with multiple locations on the continent of Africa where humans began. Further, these sites and their finds, and more to be unearthed in Africa and elsewhere, help us understand how prehistoric humans skillfully made and used tools to deploy them as resources in their respective environments. We emphasize also that civilization involves more than technological advancement, but it involves caring for one another to promote the well-being of society as a whole. The mission and vision of our museum, sitting on the physical as well as the digital spaces of the museum, provide impetus for ritualized activities that shape, frame, and reframe human civilizing efforts. As humans, we have the responsibility and accountability to act and think of ways to order and reorder our lives wherever we find ourselves. Relevant data that emanates from the research that undergirds what the museum artifacts have of today are aimed at seeking ways of returning those very artifacts that have been taken away from the continent of Africa to different parts of the world. Sources of information about our origins and contributions to the world culture are, however, because they are not located in one place and therefore easily accessible, repatriation has become part of the mission of our museum. As Oyeringchi Wambu argues, “For over a thousand years, other family members have sought to strip African heritage of its rich and complex meanings to benefit themselves.” This has involved the looting of African objects from their cultural historic sites and placed in storage houses and museums to be classified, catalogued, to produce forms of knowledge devoid of their original purposes. While set museums have become homes for African cultural heritage, most African Afro-descendant museums do not own or have access to some of these artifacts. Museums have come to represent anything but a dynamic space where rightful ownership is affirmed, cultivated, and passed on to posterity. Repatriation is part of regaining of identity defined with reference to people’s own handiwork, which is much more complex than a piece of art because it is the soul of the artist. Here, works of art are granaries of memories, of creativity, and identity, and of spirituality. The maker’s identity enshrined in history and spirituality is therefore intertwined with the maker’s craft. It is by deploying sustained and critical communicative ways of telling our own stories and the use of our spaces, both digital and physical, that our museum is developing the strategies to engage others in providing a sense of emancipation, cultural renovation, and then further strategies of producing well-meaning, well-being individuals who are part of the human family. The museum also provides hands-on and visitor-focused programs to promote self-transformation, future readiness, to improve the world we have inherited from... How many? Two minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Finally, this museum presents a perspective that we would say allows us to indicate that we have a masterful section that invites people from the world of our communities, encourages them to gainfully, to be gainfully employed in their own context by using raw materials there. Why? Because it’s an eco-museum, a museum that pays attention to the well-being of the communities in which the museum has been founded, so that those that visit are not just visitors, but those who will become co-creators of what is happening in the world of the museum. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. It was a very inspiring story. I think we will have some questions, more concrete questions for some qualifications about how it functions on everyday basis, and what’s material and what’s imagined and what is expected to be back. Okay, so, now, as I promised and as I was asked, I would like to read for you the abstract of Professor Puchan from the Scientific Research Officer of the Institute for the History of Natural Sciences, Chinese Academy of Sciences, Beijing. “This exhibition offers a visually immersive journey through the history of natural science in China, centered on the theme of Gu Wu Chong Li, investigating things and extending knowledge. The exhibition presents a curated selection of historical illustrations, scientific diagrams, manuscript sketches, annotated maps, and cross-cultural visual materials, highlighting how Chinese thinkers observed, represented, and understood the natural world. With images drawn from classical works in astronomy, medicine, mathematics, agriculture, and engineering, the exhibition reveals the depth and diversity of China’s scientific heritage. Through captioned visuals and concise interpreted texts, visitors are invited to explore how image-making functions as a mode of inquiry and a means of codifying knowledge. Rather than displaying artifacts, the exhibition foregrounds visual sources as historical documents and intellectual expressions, inviting reflection on the dynamic ways in which Chinese science developed across time and cultural encounters.” This is in short what you were supposed to see, so you can just imagine, maybe rely on what you know so far about Chinese science or history of Chinese science, which I would say we don’t know much about in the West. I think the most that was done was by Joseph Needham, who, a very well-known historian of Chinese science, who produced volumes, in the beginning himself and then later with his collaborators, especially on Chinese science, produced volumes of history of Chinese science. I just want to mention one more thing. Professor Puchan, with his colleague, the director of the institute, Professor Guan, came to Belgrade for a visit to a few institutions this past January. They visited University of Belgrade and Ethnographic Museum and a few other institutions, and they presented actually the work of this institute. I want to mention this because it is so impressive. It’s not, of course, mentioned here, because this was supposed to be a virtual exhibition, but they have something like 50 thick volumes, large-scale volumes of books on the history of Chinese science, which they produced primarily in Chinese, but now they’re also going to translate it into major world languages, English among them, but also Russian, Arabic. I think they chose actually the UN five languages, official languages. So, they also have a few thick volumes on the contemporary Chinese science. So, they’re working somewhere over there, I mean, for us, we don’t know much about it, but such visits and such presentations are there to actually introduce us to their huge effort, interdisciplinary, multidisciplinary effort, because they employ different kinds of science specialists, like, among others, anthropologists and archaeologists and others. So, yes, this is the short story about their efforts. So, now, we have Yev Craft from the Art for the World, Geneva, Switzerland. She will talk on the topic of Doppler Garger, I’m not sure if I pronounced it well, Reflections, Replicas, and the Self in the Age of the Digital Double. So, please, yeah.
Yeah, maybe a little bit more straight. Ah, look at this, okay. Sorry, a little rearrangement, my length is not made for this. Thank you very much for having me at the WASD Conference. My name is Yev Craft, and I am a curator and a researcher. I am specialized in contemporary art, and I connect contemporary art with science. As a curator, I focus on a multi-spectral approach, and you might think, like, what do you mean when it comes to curation? But the moment I develop concepts for museums, for galleries, for institutions, I work with different disciplines, with artists, with designers, with architects, with scientists, indigenous communities, and also with pop culture, because I think it’s very important when we speak about the contemporary times. Let me see if it works. Yes. I am here today, I’m presenting this project as a collaborator of the Art for the World. And the Art for the World is an NGO that was founded in 1995 by international curator Adelina von Furstenberg. She’s also a fellow of the WASD. And it was founded on the occasion of the 50th anniversary of the United Nations. And from its inception, the organization is inspired by Article 27 of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, saying, “Everyone has the right to feel, to freely participate in the cultural life of the community, to enjoy the arts, and to share in scientific advancement.” Well, they have done many projects over the years, and I think one of the most powerful projects is also an ongoing initiative. It’s called Playground and Toys, and it’s a sustainable art project that gives children in under-resourced areas the right to play, to imagine, and to connect. So, they invited over 60 designers and artists... So they invited over sixty designers and artists and architects to create playgrounds for children. And some of them were made physically real and some of them unfortunately remained into maquettes. But the good news is, is that these works have been exhibited. They have been exhibited in the United Nations in New York and also in the European Parliament. And soon, I'm happy to announce, on the twenty-nine of October, they will be in the Benaki Museum in Athens. So there will be a very big opening. This is my personal doppelganger. If you're curious about me and read my text, you can scan it right here. So today I want to speak about you, about doppelganger. So doppelganger is a virtual and digital exhibition that will officially launch next week. But I will give you a little preview today. So it says Reflections, Replicas and the Self in the Age of the Digital Double. I will guide you a little bit through the concept so you know what you're going to see and where it's all coming from. We live in an age of endless reflections. In a world where everything can be copied, what does still remain real? What happens when the self is duplicated, distorted and even lost in translation? Now we have one body, but we can have many bodies in the digital world. We have, of course, our Facebook accounts, our Instagram accounts, we have our TikToks, we have our Substacks and other academic platforms where we are all are constantly duplicating. The notion of the doppelganger has haunted human consciousness for centuries. And it has surfaced in ancient myths and psychoanalysis in cinema and now actually also in the very devices that we carry right with us in our pockets. So today we can say a doppelganger is what? It's a login, it's a bot, it's a data set or a silent algorithmic mirror of ourselves that can observe us, that can predict certain patterns. And at the same time, it can sometimes betray us because as we know, AI also makes mistakes. The, so the doppelganger exhibition is bringing together for now thirteen artists, designers and architects that reflect on this theme and together we have built this concept. So the exhibition is designed to grow and it will grow and expand and hopefully it will travel around different virtual platforms. But now it's been hosted by Finland by the Museum of Taitintalo. So throughout history and throughout cultures, the vigor of the double has carried both aspiration, threat, reflecting our hopes and also our deepest fears. In mythology, the twin may appear as a divine companion, a ghostly spirit, a paranormal apparition or even the embodiment of the soul. In ancient Egyptian belief, the ka, here you see the symbol, was a tangible spirit double sharing the same memories, emotions and essence of the person to whom it was bound. In literature, the double disturbs rather than reassures. Maybe someone of you read also the Fyodor Dostoevsky, The Double, from eighteen forty-six. He quotes, "A terrible multitude of duplicates has sprung into being." In psychoanalysis, Carl Jung called this inner counterpart the shadow self. Male, so he spoke about the repressed darker side of the psyche that we cannot easily face. In speculative fiction, we have Ursula K. Le Guin and, and she explores constant duality. So we speak about male, female, light, dark, real, unreal, and showing that the identity is not fixed, but it's a fluid negotiation between different forces. You might also know the film of Alfred Hitchcock. This is called Vertigo. And here, he is in psychological turmoil of the living presence of the double. And so it was also named after the classic nineteen fifty-eight and is a metaphor for the dizzying loss of certainty and loss of identity and loss of ground. Has anybody heard of the term zozobra by any chance? We have one. That's great. Well, zozobra was a term coined by Emilio Urango. He is a philosopher from Mexico. And he said that it's very complicated to describe it in English, but it's a state of general wobbliness that in, that oscillates between two possibilities, not knowing one to depend on. So in this way, the doppelganger could be an emotional state, but also a philosophical condition in this hyper-connected world. Well, let's come back to the contemporary time. Through our fascination with the double in ancient time, our current realities are multiplying. As I mentioned before, we are duplicating ourselves online through different platforms. And sometimes it's not even us that are creating our duplications as we have bots and people that are taking our identity. So you can also state that AI in many ways is a replica of human behavior. It trains itself on our images, on our words, on our ideas and also at our histories. So for me, it is the ultimate doppelganger. You might have come across the book by Naomi Klein. It has also the title Doppelganger. It was published in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three. So as writer and activist Naomi Klein explores in her book, the self today can be branded, it can be digitalized, idealized and even weaponized. So Klein suggests that our historical moment feels uncanny precisely because of our, we are surrounded by synthetic selves and manufactured realities. In this case, the doppelganger becomes a symptom of how we see and how we refuse to see ourselves and the other. The doubles we generate online all share one thing in common. There are ways of not seeing clearly. Not seeing ourselves because we are busy performing the idealized version of who we think we should be. There is this. I will not go into all the cinema that has been created about doppelgangers, but there are many. And all reflect on the replication and the duplication of humanity, whether it's through technology, whether it's through the spiritual realm or the psychological. It's fascinating. So now to the real exhibition. This is the Taitintalo. This is the real Taitintalo in Finland, in the place Turku. And the team, it's actually an old factory where they used to produce and make cigarettes. But now it's been transformed into a museum. And the team of Taitintalo, they digitalized the museum. They created a virtual example, a complete digital twin. And here our exhibition starts in the digital twin of the Taitintalo. Here we are looking at an artwork of Maria Touloupo and she is an architect from Cyprus. She has created this pavilion as the entrance of the doppelganger exhibition. In her words, she conceived the, the entrance of this exhibition as a twin looped passage, a structure that recalls the yin and the yang, the opposing forces turning in orbit, eternally linked but not fully aligned. Oh, sorry, completely aligned, I mean. So you can enter through, through this pavilion and then you will be teleported into the exhibition. I will share with you a little preview. So usually you have to see it with a VR casket on, so you have to imagine that you're wearing the VR glasses and you're in it. Here you can see the artworks. All the artworks are clickable and also explain what you see. Some of them are interactive. But I will show you later more. Because when you enter this exhibition, what you do not notice is that a mask will be placed on your face. This mask is created by Kevin Bry. He is a French digital artist and he has created this mask especially for every visitor. So you don't know how you look and you don't know what kind of emotions you carry with you. And so it's constantly changing and constantly shifting. And in the exhibition space, you will find different mirrors that will reflect you and you will see your emotions. And sometimes you are surveyed, sometimes you are being surveilled, you're trolled, you're beautified, you're censored. Sometimes you are caught between agency and algorithm. But, but I forgot to mention is that you're not alone in the exhibition because you can enter the exhibition with two hundred people. So you see their masks, but you can't see your own, which makes it also very interesting. Later, the exhibition, you will be greeted by this avatar. This avatar is an artwork from Brazilian-born Swiss artist Fabiano de Barros. And she has created this avatar as part of A Second Life. You might have heard about it. It's quite a game from a while ago. And she said, "We have saints in our churches. Why don't we have saints in the digital? We need protection as well." So she created Santa Milagrosa to protect us from the digital, to protect us from our emails getting lost, to protect our computers from all the viruses that can attack us. So when you enter the exhibition, you will hear, "Oh glorious Santa Milagrosa, by the light of our holy candle illuminate my virtual path, my memories and files and make sure my emails arrive well." So Santa Milagrosa is welcoming you. I'm not going to go through all the thirteen artists because that will be taking forever, but I would like to highlight two more. And this is also a remarkable one by Swedish artist Jonas Lund. And what we are looking at here is the artwork called How to Be Human, where we see nine different actions, everyday actions, like drinking coffee, dancing, opening up your phone, opening up your computer. And they are observed through AI. So how does AI see, see us and how does it think? Well, it starts very gentle, but the same movement is going to be repeated six times. And at one moment, the algorithm prompts itself and it recircles. And what happens? So what begins as mimicry becomes distortion. The human becomes data, the data mimics humanness. So the AI creates its own doppelganger of humanity. This is where the distortion starts. So the island of the doppelganger has also a downside. As the shadow side of Carl Jung, it has the island on a top level and it has the shadow side where you enter the underground. Here we are looking at an artwork from Benjamin Pompe, but it's not the artwork I would like to highlight. This is about gaming and also how the millennials especially get sucked into this fantasy gaming and harvesting different fantasy objects. The last work I would like to highlight is here. It's from Armenian artist Gohar Martirassyan. I will play it right here. So this is a, an incredible piece. It takes quite a while and you have to watch it in VR. I don't want to spoil it through just the screen. But Gohar was actually inspired by the words of Anais Nin, where she says, "I have always been tormented by the image of multiplicity of selves. Some day I call it richness, other days I see it as a disease." So we see a figure in three hundred sixty degrees that splits. And at one moment it tries to recognize itself and it does not recognize itself. It tries to harm, but it cannot come back. And at a certain point, it starts fighting with each, with itself and you're in your casket in the middle. It's not scary. It's actually really beautiful as an experience. So to come to an end of this presentation, I'd like to say, like, as we scroll through our social feeds, as we speak to our AI assistants, as we slip into our VR headsets, do we become more connected or actually more fragmented? So the digital, the doppelganger exhibition speaks about these extremes between liberating multiplicity and existential dread. And so the first question that I posed remains, in a world where everything can be copied, what remains truly real? Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think I would like to open the floor for questions. I think it would be nice, yes, Fadwa, is there anyone else? Okay, you can start.
Well, I'll start with the end with Yev. The way I see it, I mean, you see it as art and digital reflection of self. And the way I see it is that the human mind created the digital and then subordinated it to express itself in more imaginative ways. So it's really an extension of the human mind and it is about the creativity of the human mind. It's not the function of the digital per se because it's the mind, the human mind that created the digital. So it's just a comment. Paschington, I'm, I like what you were talking about in Ghana and the museum. I'd like to know if you ever were able to return the objects that were taken by colonialists because many other museums, like in Egypt and so on, are really trying hard to get back their, the objects that were taken from them. But what I see in what you presented is Africa and of course Ghana and the museum is not the beginning of humanity only and about, you know, the stories of the origin and the creation. It's the beginning of humankind, which you mentioned. You said that evolutionary biologists are also, their work is included in the museum. So essentially, it's not art per se, it is art and science because, I mean, I know the sessions are organized, sessions on art and sessions on science. But here is a case where we're talking about science because the beginning of humankind is different from the beginning of humanity. The beginning of humankind is how the whole world was populated. And we have scientific evidence of fossils, teeth, bones and so on. It's all in Africa. And it's from there they moved. And why did they move? Out because of climate change. So all those interested in sustainability and climate change should go back several million years ago to find out what these populations did when in fact the climate change and populations chose to walk out or move out of Africa and populate what is now Asia and Europe and Australia and so on. So I see the conversion of art and science. It's a comment. If you want to, it's your choice to.
Thank you. I think you've answered your question already and, and it is true. The position is to see the measure of art. The position is to see the merger of art and science, because paleontology and the others provide the scientific basis. The storytelling is the artistic way of rendering, and then using digital technology in capturing, as has also been presented there. So they go hand in hand. And so you, that's why I'm saying you've already answered that question. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think Vasna first, and then you can pose a question, right? And then Hugo.
Thank you so much. I hope you can hear me, Yev. This was a fascinating talk. I absolutely loved it. But I have a special interest, because I'm professor in Victorian literature. And what happens in the nineteenth century, you mentioned Ostrowski, but in the West, Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde or Bleak House actually are very well-known novels which come in response to scientific developments. So in Jekyll and Hyde, you have the rational self. And then in Hyde, the kind of uncanny doppelganger. I can give a lecture on this, but it's interesting. And then, with my other head as the teacher of creative writing, I now have more and more students, including recently a prize-winning young novelist called Nicholas Pardemsey, who wrote a doppelganger novel in precisely the terms that you have here, which is to do with variable self, etc. And so I was wondering if you contemplated this distinction between nineteenth century and our present day? And have you seen any parallels? Because as I say, I found this really riveting. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for this question. To be honest, it is still research under development. And as I mentioned, it's there to grow and to expand. And I think this is, like, we did this exhibition in a very short amount of time, because I feel there is so much urge of the artists to show their work, to expand on their work. And even when I was sharing the literature references that I have under my hand, they were shocked because there are people that do not know it yet. So I do think that there is definitely a very big piece of expansion, and we could actually expand on that. So I would be open to hear your lecture, and I would be even open to see a way of collaborating on that. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, please.
Yev, your question at the end, what is essential about the original you was answered by Paschington's dilemma. Because I think if Paschington were offered an exact replica of the taken artifact, I suspect he wouldn't be quite satisfied by that. And Walter Benjamin, I think it is, talks about a situation in which if you were to create an exact replicant of the Mona Lisa or of Van Gogh, and you could not tell them apart, and nobody could tell them apart, so they were identical in every respect, the original would still have what he called aura, the aura of the original, its historical reality. I'm wondering how that applies to sustainability? Because when we replicate systems or imitate ecology, what are we losing in terms of its aura, its historical reality?
Okay, thank you. Yes, and Hugo here? Can you bring the microphone? Aha, okay.
Yes, I comment to Yev's presentation. And thank you very much for this extremely deep, unbelievably interesting presentation. I am not just impressed, I'm, I say muted, but I'm trying to speak anyway. And I think you went very deep into the matter of what is a reflection and how our artificial intelligence are reflecting us. That's a point that doesn't appear in the debate, but you quoted. It's because the symbol, a symbol, is a reflection of the real thing and never exactly the real thing. And that's the first time in human history, our ancestors didn't have it. We have beings in front of us which can manipulate symbols. No other creature on this planet can manipulate symbols, abstract symbols, as we do. And I have to think about that, because I think about that for a few weeks, and then maybe I will understand it. But just a note, you cited Ursula K. Lagen, who, as you know, she's not a novelist. She's a cult. And maybe you belong to that cult as well. Because you made me think that the essential point of the symbol for Ursula Lagen is in the other novel that you didn't cite, The Cycle of Ersei. I'm sure you know it. When the mage Get Ospero Hook goes in a quest to fight his own shadow. And then he finds it. And he doesn't kill it. He absorbs it. The two doppelgangers, one of the other, eventually fuse into another, into each other. And that's the beauty of the novel, because Lagen was another sphere of entity, actually higher than anything else on this planet. But this is the hope, I think, we have, that our new doppelgangers, the AIs, will be able to fuse with them, not fight them. And then fight us, because it would be very bad for us, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hugo. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, please. Yeah. But maybe you can take the microphone also.
Thank you so much for that. I'm just curious, compared to all the other speakers that we heard before you, when they are presenting their projects, and each person is saying, yes, we got funding from this, we got funding from that. And of course, all these other projects, they have to make money. Whereas what both of you are talking about is a completely different dimension. So I'm curious, how difficult is fundraising? How are you able to convince people of something that before you convince them, they had no idea what it is? Is that very hard from both of you?
Okay, maybe first, I think.
Yes, it is difficult. Therefore, we do fundraising. And some governments look at whatever we present to them, but because what we present to them may not carry as much political weight and benefits as they want, they will have priorities that will not include what we are doing. And that's a fact of life. So it's not easy to convince people to support you to tell stories.
Okay, thank you. And Yev?
Well, I think part of the job of being a curator is also fundraising. And I think fundraising in the arts is one of the most hardest things I have encountered. Especially now with a lot of budgets being cut in several places in the world. Very often I see there is much more interest in archaeology instead of contemporary culture. And I see especially that the artists are very suffering. Thankfully, there are funds. Not a lot, but there are a few that are really supporting contemporary culture. And when I work with a lot with the Stimulering Funds in the Netherlands, and they're all about design, contemporary culture, boundary pushing innovation. And so you do have people that do believe in it. And I think once, yeah, you take stage with a team like this and you stand behind a concept, behind an idea, a lot of artists just want to make it work. And I think that that is the power as well, that we have something to say, we're all there in it together, and with the funding that there is, we will make it happen. So that is my answer, yeah. Well, I get goosebumps when you say it, because I love the gaming industry for this. And that is, if you look without any commercials here, but GTA VI, for instance, is the latest game that will get out now in May. It's so real. It's almost a film, and it's all digital. And I can imagine that the gaming industry can do it because they have a whole commercial blast behind it. But if we with the arts can do the same, we can move a lot of mountains. And that excites me a lot, because I know that the technology is there.
Thank you. I have an additional question for the museum. Paschington was, well, the Pan-African Museum was talking about. First of all, how, can you tell us in short, how did the idea come about to be, for this museum to be formed in Ghana, in Accra? Who was behind it, and when did that happen? And what, is it, is it a museum that is founded as a private museum? Or it's public, supported by the state? And also, how hard, well, you mentioned it partially when you said about funding, the different states, you know, have... But you probably want to involve as many African states as you like, or at least groups are.
Yes. Honorable Koyou Yanka, who used to be a parliamentarian, had the opportunity to travel around the world and visited museums. He gave birth to this idea of Pan-African Heritage Museum. So it's an NGO, and therefore not supported by the government. But we have academic council. We have those in charge of herbal plant, those in charge of heroes and heroines of people on the continent, as well as heroes and heroines outside of the continent, places peopled by descendants of Africans. Because historically, some of us are aware of how dynasties were established around the world by people of African descent, although they might not have been on the continent itself. And then we have a section digitally for queens and kings, modern and ancient. And so we now operate in the digital space. And we back in that up by acquiring a seventy-four-acre piece of land outside of Accra, which is about seventy-five kilometers, and where the physical museum is going to be constructed. But we preceded it with the digital museum.
Yeah, this is understood from your abstract, yes. Okay, so you're preparing. And this exhibition that you showed us in the video, is this kind of a model, part of the gallery, of the digital gallery that you have?
And then to the earlier question, what is happening is that where we aren't able to retrieve those items, we ask whether pictures could be, photographs could be taken. And so those photographs have been digitized, and therefore we have an archive of them. That's why we have about five thousand images in our galleries.
So they're probably from Ghana, from different African countries, from museums around the world, wherever you could detect.
Correct.
And identify.
Colombia, Brazil, India, Iran, Turkey, places where descendants of Africans have been before, and not many people know of their presence in those areas.
Yeah, great. Great to hear that. Okay, I think we can wrap up. I think we had a nice discussion, nice presentations. Thank you very much, and thank you for the questions. They were all very interesting. So now we can end this day's work here in the academy and go to the exhibition.
Thank you.
This is the first painting exhibition. It is across the street. That's usually, and wait in front of the building. And we'll go together across the street to the left a little bit. They're waiting for us there. This will be the opening of that exhibition, the painting exhibition. I will not say anything more about it. You will see that it will be an opening within the complex.